Tonight, we are going to hear from all six candidates who are running for city council. And we have the incumbents on one side and the challengers on the other, but divided up by two, four, and six are the seat numbers that they're in. Everybody will be given a three-minute opening, hopefully focused on who they are and just why they're running for city council. Then we'll take questions for an hour if we have that many questions, and I hope we do. And there'll just be questions from the audience, so stand up and, you know, kind of belt it out. And Elizabeth Watson is going to be our moderator. She was on the Kent City Council for eight years, and she's very familiar with all of this, except that she has unfortunately...
Broke a leg.
...broken her leg. So when they say break a leg, they didn't really mean it. So, and then we'll have three-minute closings, and I would like the closings to be themed with where do you see Des Moines in five years? What's the future look like? And so hopefully the candidates will have the opportunity to do that, and then that will close the forum. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth, but we're missing our timekeeper, and our backup timekeeper happens to be right by the door. And so can you, you know, at one minute, hand goes up, at 30 seconds, yeah, and then cut them off.
All right.
Okay. Could we get you to take the front row so the candidates can see you more clearly? Thanks, Jamie. So I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth at this point. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I am really honored to be here tonight to work on this. As I told a couple of the candidates, when I was on the Kent City Council back in 2006, I was the lead person from Kent on the Envision Midway Project. And at that time, the idea of a train actually coming to South King County in 2020 just sounded way out there. And now that it's actually going to happen, I'm very excited about that. So the way I envision this, we're going to have each candidate come up here to the microphone and do their three-minute opening, and then we'll take questions from the floor. And so we'll just start, democratically, we'll start with the twos, and then we'll go to the fours and the sixes, and then the closing statements we'll do in the opposite order. So we're going to start with, Elizabeth, you'd like to come up and introduce yourself?
I'm telling everybody why you're here. No. So, good evening, everyone. It's really good to see you all here. As you know, my name's Louisa Banks, and I'm running for reelection for the city council seat, position two. I'm proud, I am proud to have served on the seat of Des Moines as a council member since 2015. My family and I have lived in Des Moines for 23 years, and I retired after 33 and a half years from Port of Seattle as a senior maintenance manager. And I was responsible for an $18 million budget, and I also managed 100-plus people. I retired to spend more time in the community I love with the two people who had it to me the most, that's my daughter Ariel and my grandson. I started to get involved with the city because I wanted to seek change. At the time, I decided to join the Arts Commission, which I later chaired. And after getting involved in the city, I knew there was more I could do, more skills I could bring, and absolutely learn from the residents in our community. I then joined the Police Advisory Board in 2015, and later that year led to an opportunity to, excuse me, apply for a vacant seat on the council. During that year on council, I came to realize the city faced some hard challenges, and as a council member, I was left with hard decisions. The city was close to being annexed in near bankruptcy. With so much work left to do, I made the decision to run for reelection in 2016 and one. While some think that decision-making may be easy, I can tell you it comes with great weight. The former city manager made the decision to retire, and in 2016, the council hired city manager Michael Mathias. We worked together to create a 309 capital fund that is separate, that is a separate fund from the city's operating budget. And that's where we hold one-time revenue sources, such as construction earnings. The reason that this series of decisions carried so much weight is because it impacted the sustainability of our city. One-time monies were being used to float the operating budget. That was not sustainable and is no longer happening. We were able to balance our budget, and for the first time in years, we have a healthy reserve. Now that we have accomplished sustainability, we can focus on growth. Growing the city means revitalization from the Marina to Path Highway, from Redondo to North Hill. Making these attractive destinations for all community members. Growing the city means making the state, making sure that safety is a top priority. The police department is fully staffed, fully funded, and has better training on less than lethal force and de-escalation. Growing the city meant increasing our human services budget by double from 2018 and continuing to increase it so that we can continue to keep help those in our community who need the help most. Growing the city means continuing to improve our parks. We are replacing old unsafe play equipment, and the Arts Commission is focusing on activities to bring more people to our city. These are just a few things I want to continue to be involved with, and I'm going to wrap it up. I hope you will rely on me again to help make hard decisions and focus on our growth. I would appreciate your vote November 5th for Des Moines City Council, position number two. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is J.C. Harris, and I'm running for position two. I am a licensed professional engineer. I had a consulting firm for, hello, had a consulting firm for many decades, and we did all kinds of stuff with logistics and financial software, and they were kind enough to shift me into doing education and marketing. So I am running because I have an interest in improving the transparency and the long-term planning of Des Moines, and that all sounds like a real snore fest, but I will give you one specific example. The number 24, that is the percent of sales tax revenue that has decreased in the last year for this city. Our revenue from small business has increased by almost one quarter in one year. Now, when reading a budget, one needs context, and the context is we are a waterfront city in one of the most prosperous areas on the entire planet, in arguably the best economic environment that any of us will ever see, and our business community is going down by almost a quarter. I am running to try to focus, to refocus the city on small business where we should have been all these decades and have not done. It's the only way we will ever have the funds that we need in order to have the programs and the services that we have left slide for so long. I think it's grand that we have gotten ourselves out of near-receivership, but that's far too low a bar. So I am running for city council in order to bring my expertise to bear on developing a better small business community and then providing the things that we all want that will float from that. I thank you and ask for your vote with the ballots that you now have. You know, it's nowhere near as much fun as it used to be when you could say, "I thank you for your vote on November 5th." So, you know, when you get your ballot, look for me.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I'm council member Jeremy Nutting. I've been your city council member for the last six years. I am running for reelection for seat number four. I've lived in this community for the last 17 years with my beautiful wife and brought two beautiful children into this community as well. We are rooted here in Des Moines, North End and South End. You can find us walking about the boardwalk, walking about the waterfront in downtown, at the farmer's market, mostly at the park runs sometimes, when the weather permits, and just around town. I'm a local business owner. I also work for a general contractor as an assistant superintendent. This gives me a little bit different perspective. I'm the only one that has children in the Highline School District and in schools, and also construction knowledge and contractual knowledge about construction contracts. I pledge to continue to encourage the development and economic growth, support government services that protect us as citizens, capitalize on the waterfront and the Marina as a destination, which our city is a destination. I stood in a room today, I had the pleasure of being in a room this afternoon, full of businesses, small business owners in this city, one of which said that in the last five years, her business has more than doubled. She has had a pleasure being here in Des Moines. Businesses from the North End to the South End are flourishing. There are some derelict properties, and we can set the table for those business owners, those property owners, but we can't force them to sell to developers. I pledge to continue to connect with those businesses and residents and understand their concerns. We have created a sustainable budget and added more officers. We also added a K-9 unit through the help of our Des Moines Police Foundation and their ability to raise funds to buy the K-9 officer. We've been able to fund necessary street paving projects, and we've added parks. I'm Des Moines City Council member Jeremy Nutting. I'm running for reelection. I appreciate your support. Please vote November 5th, position number four, Jeremy Nutting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan White, and I have been, I've lived in Redondo for 30 years. I've raised three daughters here, and I have six grandchildren, two who live in Des Moines. And this isn't my first rodeo on the city council. I served on the city council for eight years between 2001 to 2009. And so I've kind of been not totally, I've been engaged in a lot of things, but, you know, I haven't been totally engaged in all the stuff happening in the city. But since I've re-engaged, a lot of this sometimes feels like Groundhog Day to me because there's so many things that just seem like the same. You know, the downtown, we had all these plans years ago to do this and do that, some of these things just still haven't happened. And, you know, I'm running for some of these reasons that I'm good at creating relationships. A lot about this whole government and getting new things happening is creating relationships, whether it's regionally, nationally, or whatever. And I was instrumental in the beach park restoring that by doing some networking back in Washington, D.C. years ago. Came back from Patty Murray's office with $250,000 earmark kind of for this park, and it just kind of took a life of its own with a lot of great partners. So I'm all for partnerships. I'm also all about transparency, and I feel like we need an independent voice on the council. I will be that voice. And also, we are a little different where Redondo went on in the 30th district, which are federal-based schools and different water and all that stuff. So we're one Des Moines, but we're a little different too, living where I live and all that. So I'm willing to do this again, stepping up for my community. I support our seniors. I am now a senior. I was not a senior when I, when I left the council, but I know how important and the value of what seniors contribute to our community. I came back from Phoenix today attending my late husband's pilot reunion up in Flagstaff. I sat on the tarmac for almost 40 minutes to get into a gate, so I'm a little fired up about that. And I think there's a lot of work we can do too with the Port of Seattle. Years ago, I was part of that fight against the third runway. You know, it's a big fiasco now. I think cities need to align collectively to come together and make this more cohesive because it's, you know, we should have cited another regional airport way back then, and we didn't. So, thank you for your vote in November.
Got to adjust the mic because I'm tall. I'm large, just like my campaign signs. My name's Rob Batt. I'm running for reelection to Des Moines City Council, position number six. Just a brief part about my background. I'm an Air Force brat, and my dad was a career colonel in the Air Force. I was born in Tachiko, Japan, and I moved to Seattle in 1980. When I was young and stupid, I actually ran for city council three times because I thought I knew everything. I ran in 2001, and I lost. I ran in '03, and I lost. And then I ran again in '05, and I lost. And so after three strikes, I thought, this must not be my calling, so I walked away from it. And four years ago, 2015, I was really scared about my community. Des Moines was on the verge of bankruptcy, and I didn't want to run. I got tired of losing. A good friend of mine just walked in, Dr. Queen Wahihwe. Would you raise your hand, please? She's from Nigeria. She's a good friend of mine, and she encouraged me that I got to step up to the plate because my ship is sinking. So I ran, and guess what? I didn't have an opponent. It was handed to me on Silver Bladder. I did not have to come to any forums like this. By the way, thank you all for being here. This is the best forum I've been to yet. But I didn't have to try four years ago. I'm really glad I have an opponent now because I have to earn your vote. So four years ago, I get onto the council, I get sworn into office, and I realize how much I don't know. So I busted my butt trying to learn everything I could, and I took classes offered by the Association of Washington Cities. And within my first two years of public office, I earned this thing called a CNL, a Certificate of Municipal Leadership. Big deal. Well, that qualified me to become a member of the Board of Directors of this group called the Association of Washington Cities. So I'm here to make a difference. I am co-chair of both the Environment and Transportation Committees. I'm working with Sound Transit for the extension of Light Rail to Island College and beyond. I'm working with WashDOT on the completion of State Route 509. I'm an alternate voting member at SCOREJ. And because of our current financial situation that we're in, that I can take claim to, we're now able to issue new bonds to refinance our Marina, and we've got the best credit rating that we've ever had as a city. I'm asking for your vote. I'm telling you, I'm not perfect, but I think I can represent you well. I'm the owner of my own business, Kelly Professional Cleaning and Property Service. I've been self-employed for 35 years. I've had some good times and some bad times. Those of you who got my mail also know that I am a umpire, so I get to call balls and strikes, and I don't care if the player, the coach, or the fan argues. I'm going to call it the way I see it. Am I out of time? I'm out of here, so, thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to come out today and to be involved in the political process. My name is Anthony Martinelli, and I am running for Des Moines City Council, position six. I have lived here in Des Moines since I was 11 years old, and I'm proud to be raising two kids here. I, sorry, and I'm proud to be raising two kids here. I'm running for city council because I do have a deep love and appreciation for the city, and I have a strong desire to do what I can to help improve it. As far as my professional background goes, I spent over a decade working with various nonprofit organizations and state and local lawmakers. I previously served as a campaign manager for State Representative Dave Up the Grove and spent four years as a unanimously elected precinct committee officer. In 2011, at the age of 21, I launched my own online business, which had three full-time employees by the next year. I've also spent hundreds of hours volunteering for various causes, and I have a first-degree black belt from the World Taekwondo Federation. Throughout this election, I have put forth a varied list of policies and laws that I support and would work on if elected. Since there wasn't enough time to go over them all today, I do encourage everyone to go to martinellifercouncil.com, or you'll find the detailed list. That said, some of my top priorities include improving public safety, enhancing our business climate, putting a larger focus on homelessness and growing poverty rates. And in addition, one of my primary goals if elected would be to represent the will of my constituents. I'm not interested in following a political party or following a particular ideology. I'm interested in representing the voice of the people and doing what I can to help improve the city. Our campaign has received endorsements from lawmakers, groups, and community leaders, including State Representative Mia Gregerson, former House Speaker Jim Moller, and retired Harvard psychiatry professor Dr. Westia Greenspoon. Once again, I thank all of you for coming out today, and I look forward to your questions.
Somebody walked off with my notes. They were on the podium. First of all, I want to, I want to congratulate everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's hard to come out to these events, and this room is packed, so give yourself a round of applause. We had anticipated having two microphones, one for the audience and one for up here. We have one, and it's a little wonky, so we're just going to give this a try. We're going to have folks come up to the aisle here and ask a question, and let me know which two candidates it's directed at, and then you'll have, they'll have one and a half minutes to respond. Okay? So do we have our first question of the evening?
J.C., what is your plan about fighting the port and the amount of aircraft going over it?
Wow, yeah, how much time you got?
Would you like to stand?
Should I stand? Will I project better?
Yes.
Sure. So our city has done, boy, I know this is touchy, we have done a particularly poor job of pushing back against the Port of Seattle over the decades. We have swung wildly from like, hey, let's, you know, just blow $5.5 million to, you know, we should cooperate with the port. Ideally, all of the cities should be working together on this aggressively, but truth is, they do not at this point. I would favor hiring a professional to advocate for First Des Moines and then hopefully the other cities to do this. And I'll tell you why. I was in court this morning. The city of Burien is suing over one particular flight path, and if you weren't there, you wouldn't get a true sense of how the arguments went and how the judges reacted to all of that. You need to have somebody in the room at every moment of importance with the port, with the state, with each of the cities in order to influence events. And we have to have a professional person to do that, or at least expertise, and I will be the first council member if elected to have that expertise. Thank you.
Sorry. We also anticipated having cards, so we're going to, we're just going to keep moving along. Did you want Louisa to respond to that, or was it just for him?
That worked for me.
Okay.
So we have legislative aides that are advocating for our city. I do realize that there are several communities that need to come together to work this situation out, and I believe the last effort that they made was in September, and there's another one scheduled for, I believe, November. I'm not an aviation expert. I worked at the port. I worked in the maintenance department at the port, which is very far removed from aviation noise. But I will say this, the city of Des Moines does get, the city has ponied. We've implemented an advisory meeting. We have worked with our senator and our legislature. We certainly have advocated to make sure that the governor signed that bill to side the third runway, excuse me, a second airport. So as far as somebody being in the room at all times for all meetings, I don't know if we can do that. I know as a council member, we have several committees we're on, and we're always engaged in what goes on in this city. I don't have the energy to do that. We've got great people who have energy to do that and provide input, and we provide input. So as far as I'm concerned, I know that there's going to be situations coming up where the airport has to ponie, and I just spoke with Tina Orwal today, and we both agree, as she does with the city council, that there's more that can be done, but we've got to do it incrementally.
Thank you. I saw this gentleman had his hand up. Can you come up? I think we're going to...
It was the same question.
It was the same question.
I can hear her question, but the plane's going.
Gotcha. Touche. Would you like to come up here, sir, and say your question in the microphone?
Sure.
We're winging this, so now we're changing up.
My name is... My name is Bill Adams. I've been a member of the Des Moines community since 1964. My primary concern and interest is the climate crisis that our planet is currently in. And climate includes both air quality and water quality.
What was your question?
My question is, I understand Des Moines is the only city or community on the water here in King County that is not tied into the State Department of Ecology Water Monitoring System. The question is directed to any of you who can answer that. If that's true, why is that? Is Des Moines not interested in water quality?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, since these two have already had a chance to answer, we're going to start with Susan and then Jeremy, and then, oh, I'm sorry. Rob. And we'll try and keep this to a minute since we're having everybody here.
Honestly, answer your question. I really don't know why the city is not part of that. I mean, I have to be really honest with you. I mean, I would be happy to try to find that out. Maybe you're precocly or calling you, you could call me, and I'll certainly try to find some answers on that.
We do monitor the water. We are part of the DNR that monitors the water around us. We, we've cleaned up the creeks in the area and brought back salmon. I, we are part of the water turn, water monitoring system. So I don't know where you got that information. I'd be glad to take down your information to get more about that, but I do know that they do water, they do monitor the waters in our area.
Yeah, I'm actually not quite sure. I will also look into that, and if we're not part of that, I definitely think we should be, but I'm also not quite sure.
Go ahead.
I am co-chair of the Environment Committee, and I can say that we are accountable to the State Environmental Protection Agency, the SEPA, and also the King County Shellfish Protection District had been established here in Pugis Sound with all kinds of testing stations because we have a responsibility to the tribal folks for fishing rights. So our water is very much monitored. I hope that helps.
Okay, another question? Can you come up here and say from the room, so I can hear?
I'm not sure who to ask this to. Put it out there, and we'll find out. Okay. I just...
I'm so sorry. If you can shout, you can.
Yeah, okay, so I was just wondering if there's been any thought given to encouraging some of the disgruntled Seattle businesses to come out our way?
Okay. The question basically was, as far as economic development, what are, what is Des Moines doing to encourage those businesses who feel like they're being squeezed out of Seattle to come to Des Moines? So we'll let Louisa start, and then J.C.
the state Environmental Protection Agency, the SEPA, and also the King County Shellfish Protection District had been established here in Puget Sound with all kinds of testing stations, because we have a responsibility to the tribal folks for fishing rights, so our water is very much monitored. I hope that helps.
Okay, another question? Can you come up here and say from the room, so I can hear?
I'm not sure who to ask this to.
Put it out there, and we'll find out.
Okay. I just...
I'm so sorry. If you can shout, you can.
Yeah, okay, so I was just wondering if there's been any thought given to encouraging some of the disgruntled Seattle businesses to come out of Des Moines?
I can't read that.
Okay. The question basically was, as far as economic development, what is Des Moines doing to encourage those businesses who feel like they're being squeezed out of Seattle to come to Des Moines? So we'll let Luiza start, and then J.C.
So essentially...
I don't think it's just fish. The bike's back.
So recently, I've been talking to a business in Seattle that's a restaurant that wants to move south and open three or four businesses, and so I've been trying to get the city manager and our economic, well, I call her our economic development person, but our chief strategist to the table. Now that we're almost done with budget, we can probably see some movement there, but as far as actually reaching out to the different businesses in Seattle, that's a huge task. I mean, we would love to have people to come south, and it's not like we don't want that to happen, but you also have to have the business owners, as well as the property owners, engaged at the table to have that happen. And so I'm right there with you. We know we can get some exciting things coming down into Des Moines, and I'm going to be perfectly honest, there are a lot of people knocking on our door to come to Seattle, to leave Seattle, and to come to Des Moines, but not just Seattle. We're talking about out of state as well. So there's a lot of excitement. We just have to do this like one step at a time, and there's a lot of balls in the air right now, not that I'm making any excuses at all, but I know our mayor has reached out to the property owners to try to get them to the table, and we're going to do more of that.
Great, thank you.
I would just say that if elected, that is exactly what I am going to do. I am going to make it my mission to market and try to recruit businesses to come here that are the kind of businesses that we should have had for decades. Fifty percent of the population is under 40. I would not presume, and I don't think any of the council or our city manager would presume to know the needs, wants, and desires of younger people who do spend their money, and those are the people we should be focusing on and bringing businesses here actively. Yeah, it's really, really hard, but you know, if you had cancer, you wouldn't say, well, you know, chemotherapy is really hard, I don't know about it. Developing a strong restaurant and service sector here is, it's just existential. We must have it, we should have had it for decades. We frankly avoided it because it was hard to do, but at what point do you say, look, I don't care if it's hard or not, we simply must do it, okay? It's got to be the city's number one priority, you know? We thought it was worth spending five and a half million dollars to fight the third runway. I would tell you that this is equally important to our future, and probably we can have a better result.
Thank you. Yeah, this is such a broad, important question, I think everyone should have a chance to answer, so.
So, we partner as a city with the Southside Chamber of Commerce, other entities like Destination Des Moines, they do the reach out to businesses in other areas. We also have a city manager that reaches out to the developers and businesses as well. As a guidance in construction that works on multi-use, multifamily, multi-use projects, building, buildings that have got retail below and apartments above, so they have a captive audience, helps keep businesses rooted, but that's not the solution. We do have businesses that are moving. Origins just opened up in downtown Des Moines. They closed their business in downtown Seattle and moved down here because their rents are better. The building's not necessarily better, but that's nothing we can do about that. We have Anytime Fitness that is opening up next to the Dollar Tree, taking a space that was unseen, unutilized, unoccupable, and turning that into another small business. So we are doing, we are taking the steps to get small businesses, and we have small businesses that have been around for a number of years, like the Print Place, the Dry Cleaners, the Moyn's Dry Cleaners, the Yarn Store. We have people that have been there, and we are attracting new businesses. We just need building owners and trusts to sell to new developers to have better buildings.
Thank you. So we can get to all the questions, we really have to stick to that one and a half minutes, I know it's hard.
Well, it seems to me, I mean, years ago, we started trying to do this whole rewire, simplify the code. I know I still hear people that are very frustrated in trying to do business with the city of Des Moines, I mean, building permits, whatever. Some of these things, just for some reason, they start with some momentum, and then they go somewhere else. I'd like to see, we did some studies way back when for the downtown, and now we've got the marina kind of in this lockdown feeling. I think it's, some of it feels disconnected, and I would like to revisit that.
As far as the type of business, if you're talking about a franchise or a chain, they have their own reasons why they locate where they do. I will say, right after I was elected, I did reach out personally to Trader Joe's Corporate, because I would love to see a Trader Joe's in our downtown, and they told me that their business model is to keep no more, no less than 10 miles between their stores. So they already got one in Five Corners in Burien, they've got one in Federal Way. For them to open another Trader Joe's in Des Moines, they would get very little new customer base coming in, so that was a buzz. As far as just local small business, one of the success stories is Dive 8 right in downtown. Des Moines is known as one of the scuba diving capitals on the west coast right now, so it is very water friendly, water business friendly. I can also speak to Des Moines Creek. We've got businesses that moved here. K2 Ski Manufacturer moved here from the peninsula, the company that makes skis for cross-country downhill, that's right here in our business park. Green Core, they make all the sandwiches for Starbucks, and then gets shipped out up and down the west coast, that's right here in Des Moines. I can't speak so much about the FAA as being a business, but they did consolidate several locations around the Puget Sound area, and they consolidated in Des Moines, so we've done well. We've done well with the size of a city we are.
So when it comes to this, I'm pretty aligned with Mr. Harris. If elected, I would do a lot and would work to try to market our city and bring in new businesses. I think one of the things we really need to do is work on getting a Des Moines-based Chamber of Commerce, and not just focus on the Southside Chamber of Commerce, I think that will help. I also think we need to do more to retain and promote our current businesses. I think our city has a lot of turnover, which kind of pushes other businesses to not want to come into our city, because they see new businesses come in, they're great, they're gone really quickly. I think as a city, we need to do more to promote them, to retain them, and to kind of give them a good environment.
Thank you. So do we have another question from the audience? Would you like to come on?
We'll get this over with.
No feedback. My name is Patrick Elliott. I've been a homeowner here in the city for almost a year now at the end of the month, and my question is around code enforcement. There are a lot of residential properties that are, let's say, not following city code at all, and this stems from a flyer that I got from J.C., but I'm curious if anyone's input into that, and what the city plans to do about presidential code enforcement.
So, you're welcome. So the question is, you want to see increased code enforcement, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Martinelli, and then we're in.
So when speaking with residents knocking on doors, this is something that has came up multiple times, that people have issues with, people having abandoned RVs on the road, and just different things like that. I think that the laws we have in place are valid, I don't necessarily think we need to add any more laws, I just think we need to make a stronger effort to enforce the ones that we have, and to make sure that people abide by them. Start maybe giving out fines at a higher rate, which is unfortunate for the people who get those fines, but it will help to, you know, maybe reduce some of those things.
Yeah, so our code enforcement has changed over the last four years. We are actually a lot more complaint-driven now, as opposed to having somebody going out and looking for issues, and so if there is a specific issue, I encourage everybody to please call in. I've got one in my own neighborhood, that I love my neighbors, and I don't really want to raise that fight, but if there is an issue with public safety, public nuisance, and attraction for homeless people to come in, or places where people are going to do drugs, PDM, our code people, they're going to be all over that, but we do need calls, so again, there's not somebody going out looking for stuff. We've got a lot on our plate right now, but every call that comes in, or gets emailed in through our website, it does get addressed, and you will get a response, so I'd say that much.
Well, I think it's true, social media too has been a really good way to get some, you know, the word out, that people need to report, and the city is efficient, I believe, in being able to file a complaint, but also some of these pages on Facebook are helpful, so, and we have to report. Sometimes people don't want to, but code enforcement is really...
I unfortunately am the, I'm not the victim, but I am a neighborly fellow, and I let it go on way too long in my neighborhood, and I did report it online, and it took 30 days to make this issue that I had go away, and it became unsafe for my wife and my kids, and we were trying to do the neighborly thing and let it go. But it is, it's an online-based program, or you can call it, it's more efficient if you take pictures and attach it to your summary online, and Code Enforcement, Corey Bateman, Code Enforcement Officer, is very good, very excellent, others, and he does his very best to resolve issues as diplomatic as possible, so, thank you.
So in 2012, I rented out my house for a year, come back, and the city used to have a program where when you rented out the property, you had to take a little class, and you had to register a phone number where you could always be reached as a landlord, and the city dumped that program in 2013. And it comes to happen that the guys across the street from me decide to rent out their homes, and then move off to who knows where. And one of the homeowners is having problems with his kids, and the other homeowner turns out to be a meth addict and a copper wire thief, and so the home burns down, and then the other home is totally trashed, and so thirty of my neighbors move out, my friends for over 20 years. When you have code enforcement problems, you are damaging your entire street, and there are hundreds of homes like that. And so if I have, you know, if I feel some kind of way about it, it's because I've seen what happens when you allow neighborhoods basically to be pushed around by people who do not keep up their property, and where the only response is, well, they have to wait for a crime to be committed. We can do a lot better than this.
I'm not familiar with that 2012 situation, however, anyone who's going to rent their property out, they're required to have a license. They're required to go in and fill out the form to say, I'm going to rent my house out, I'm going to rent my apartment.
Is there a database of this publicly searched?
Well, you can certainly look on the police department's website, but I will say on the cover, that I'm on the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. We constantly have the police committee reports. However, the police also have community meetings, which one was, I think, just a week or two ago. They have a website where you can take a look at what's going on, and where you can report this information, and I agree, pictures are great. Code enforcement is essentially one person, so we're sitting here with, you know, six to 10 miles of property to look at, and I will say that if there is an issue and nobody reports it, how do they know? I mean, no one's going to know if you don't report it, if you don't call, if you don't complain. And I would say, you know, over the last four years, Corey has worked his tail off to make sure these nuisance properties that he's aware of, and he rides around, so he will see some of them, but he doesn't see all of them. So it's unfortunate that people will leave or move rather than getting the police department involved, and the police department works with the maintenance crews, so our crews will go in and make sure, you know, after the process is worked through, to get that stuff off the property. So there are fines, you know, but there's a process by which the police department have to go through.
Thank you. Yeah, continue.
I've been a public school teacher for 46 years, I don't think I need to come up in front to be heard. Yes, for those of you who don't know, I'm Jim Langston, past president of Des Moines Historic Society, and board directors of our Hillgrove Pioneer Cemetery. What interests me currently is the Van Gasken property, which is the oldest property and house in Des Moines, lying between above the marina. I'd like to know what the current city members, council members feel about that property, what should be done, or will be done, and as important is none more so, landmark on the sound, the Sonic Retirement Road. Any of us who go by there feel that you're in France, looking at a chateau? I hope that building will not come down, I hope something can be done to save it, and it would require a lot of money, but where else on Puget Sound do you have a building like that, with that kind of history? I'd like to know both the council members who are serving now, and those who are writing their opinions on those two properties.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start in the middle this time, and start with Jeremy. I am keeping track of this, you know. To the best of my ability.
Jim, thanks for the question. The Van Gasken property was purchased with help from Portera to buy that property, to make it into a city park, and reutilize the building that's there. There, we've come into some issues that we're working through right now, and once that have been, once those have been taken care of, we will be moving forward with land improvements there, lawn improvements, and bringing the building back into use for public use. The second one, the landmark on the sound, as you guys know, it has sold to a developer. He's the, he, they are the developer of the Kent Station. It sold for roughly $12 million, very under budget for, under what it should have sold for. I personally would like to see the building stay there. As the council, we can urge them to keep the building, but we can't make them keep it. We can, we've rezoned that area to help whatever developer gets there to be utilized properly, and again, we can urge them to keep the building, but with the Masons keeping it off of the historic registry on purpose, from tying anybody's hands of what they can do with that land, there's really not much we can do, other than encouraging them. They have not come into City Hall with a plan yet, so you got my news.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that there's some archaeology finds or something on that Van Gasken property, which is probably holding up, you know, any further ideas with that, and that could take a long time to sort that out. I've been on the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, they're board for nine years. That's a statewide organization, and I think from talking to my board there, they also know the people that bought this, and I think from what I've heard, Jim, that they are historic-minded people, and hopefully they're going to reach out, we can reach out, and I totally agree with you, I think the entirety of that building, it would be so sad if something happened. But we can work with the people too, and there's all kinds of tax credits for doing some things, so I know they might have available, so that would be what I would reach out to do.
Luiza?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd like to add, and you're right, there were some native artifacts found there, so we have to work through that. As far as the landmark on the sound, it belongs to the Masons, it was sold by the Masons, and unfortunately, part of that sale was that the new owners took out a demo permit. and unfortunately, part of that sale was that the new owners took out a demo of it. They have not come forward with any plans, they have not said they're gonna demo it. But again, you know, the city has to follow whatever that permit is that they, you know, that they will essentially come forward to request. We wanna see it stay the same, it's gorgeous, you know, it's, it's a park, it's someplace where we'd all like to go and just hang out and sit if, if it's allowed. And I don't personally know the new developers, but I think, I think when they come in to finally show us a plan, that's when we'll be able to say, hey, have you thought? Again, we haven't seen any. So as, as far as the city goes, that's what we're waiting for at this particular point in time.
Regarding the Van Gasken property, you know, this is, this sounds, you know, tangential, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting tired of parks being, you know, basically all of the good stuff being in the north and core of town, all right? Half the population is in the south end and if the city is gonna, you know, borrow a couple of million for park, it should be in the south end of town. Sorry if that sounds like pandering, but I just wanna get in my thing that park development should be in the south end of town, that's where it's needed. As far as the Masonic home, again, it's like with the downtown, it's like do whatever it takes. That place is so unique in the entire area, I cannot express, I mean, whatever action is required of the city to maintain that place in perpetuity for the benefit of the community.
So at Van Gasken, we were able to acquire that with very little, I don't think of any taxpayer money, it was either Portera or grants, so fortunately the taxpayer didn't have to pay for that. We do wanna preserve the historic value of that place. In the process of redoing the irrigation systems on that property, there were some artifacts found and we had a legal responsibility to report that to the tribal council of the Duamish and the Muckel shoot. So some council leaders came out and they were visibly shaken with what they had seen there, so we just, we need to work with them. It's a slow process. It is a city park, but we've gotta be careful of what we're doing as far as digging up around there. I'm not saying it's a burial ground, nobody's saying it is. We've tried to keep it kind of quiet because we don't want treasure hunters going out there digging some stuff up and getting more artifacts, but we've just gotta be really careful with how we treat that property. But the idea is to keep the house looking identically the way it is and make it a city park, because that's like, if you look at our history book, you see that house way back from eighteen eighty-nine, I mean, that's, it's a big part of our history. The Masonic home, I'll just say, keep in mind, there were five offers on the Masonic property that pulled out. And every one of them pulled out because when they did their own feasibility study, they found out that building was built in nineteen twenty-six. The plumbing and the electric in that building is from nineteen twenty-six. The inside of that building is all masonry, it's all concrete, so it's not like you're modeling your house where you're gonna tear some sheetrock off and put in new pipes and wire. It's gonna be major jackhammering work, so every five offers that had come in before, it didn't pencil out for them. The last one, we had hoped it was gonna go through, we actually enhanced the zoning to institutional campus zoning, so if it is torn down, we don't know if it is, but they could go higher. So the new owner's name is Corliss, it was a private transaction between the Masons and this developer. We don't know what he has in mind, but we are anxious to find out. Thank you.
So I don't have a whole lot to add, as mentioned, the Van Gasken property is kind of pending. I would definitely like to see as soon as we can to preserve it while not completely remodel it, not drastically overhaul it and the temple, as mentioned, that's already purchased, there's only so much the council can do. I do think that the council should advocate for it remaining, but there isn't a whole lot that they can do if it should come.
Thank you. I'm looking at the time and we probably have time for four more questions before closing statements, so if you'd like to come up and ask your question, and then this gentleman will be next. And you don't have to take the entire one and a half minutes. It's not a requirement, you know.
This question is for Mr. Back. Mr. Back, you've been on the council since two thousand sixteen. In two thousand seventeen, ordinance sixteen seventy-four was passed with your approval to institute a fee for parking at both the marina and the beach park. Yet at Canada tonight on September twenty-fifth, you stated very firmly that you would never support a new fee or tax on the backs of the taxpayers to make up for a city shortfall. But yet that is what the parking fee at the marina is exactly, to make up for a city shortfall and to repair.
Oh, your question's too long.
And so I, I was wondering if you could speak to that discrepancy.
Thank you for the question, I'd love to.
The question, basically, from my understanding, is what is everyone's opinion or their feeling about parking at the marina?
No. It's about the discrepancies between states.
Yeah, I believe you heard your question, but for the rest of folks, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you for, I think I heard that on social media somewhere, somebody told me about it. So at the candidates forum, Andrea specifically asked the question of all candidates, are you willing to increase taxes to supplement for a budget shortfall? She did not mention fees. She said taxes. Read, no, but watch the video.
She said, she said fees also.
Excuse me, we need to keep this civil and not personal. This is about the marina and we do have a candidate here who has voted on that and will need to defend his vote and his position, and then everyone else will get an opportunity to give their opinion as well.
So there's a difference between taxes and fees. I can write off my taxes on my personal income tax when I choose to itemize. I cannot write off parking. If I go to a C-Hops game and pay thirty bucks for my parking and go to that game, I can't write that off. But I can't write off taxes. Utility taxes are something that happened before I got on council, I didn't like it, it's here, but fees, I can't do anything. I didn't make any promise on fees. If the city's gonna sponsor something like a camp chaos or something for kids to come to, there's gonna be a fee for that. People will have to pay that fee and they can't write that off. So my stand is against, no, no taxes. I don't wanna put any new taxes on the backs of taxpayers. If we can't handle it with the budget that we've got now, we will have to do more with less. But I wanna clarify, if you watched that candidates forum.
We did.
Andrea specifically said taxes.
Thank you.
Read my list. Taxes, not fees.
Well, then you misheard.
Because the question is concerning a current thing, we're just gonna go here, we're gonna go with Jeremy and then Lisa and then to the challengers.
What's the question?
The question is, what is your stance on the marina parking? Anything you'd like to add to the question?
That was one question for one candidate.
Okay, so if the other candidates do not want or not intending to speak to the issue, we can move on to another question. Does anyone wanna speak to it?
I, I'll, I'll speak to it. You know, the, the fees down there at the marina, there's, there's eighty percent of the cars that go there are from out of the city and we're capitalizing on our waterfront and eighty percent of the people from out of our city, out of town, that use our marina. Marina, twenty percent from which are in city and we're able to buy parking passes for eight cents a day. And I buy mine, I buy two of them every year. It's not much to ask and it helps us, it helps us with our bond rating, go to the bank and shows a, other income other than the marina tenants to refinance and to get bonds for the North Bulkhead and the replacement of the rest of the restrooms down there. So that's my input.
Did you wanna add anything, Lisa? Did you wanna speak to it? You don't have to.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make one comment. You heard the eighty-twenty and that's absolutely true. Thirty dollars for those who live in the city and sixty dollars for those that don't. And I think we all wanna make sure that we had our fair share. If you look at that thirty dollars that we all pay that live in the city, you say sixty cents a day, I'm saying it's two dollars and fifty cents a month, which is about to say, pays for itself. I will say that what we are doing at the marina for paid parking is paying for those things that were paid for by those voters, and I'm sure voters didn't appreciate it because they don't use the parking there, they get their parking with their permits. So it's important that we have what we call the land side take care of certain things. Do you know what it costs? And I, and I have to tell you this, it costs sixteen hundred, pretty close to sixteen hundred dollars a year to fund just the doggy bags. Okay, that's for Redondo and for the marina. So it's, what's, what's happening here is that we've gotta take a look at, the marina being its own fund, takes care of its own maintenance. So we've gotta support that however we can. I don't know if people, I mean, it was long before my time when people said, you know, the city took all the money from the marina. I would say to you that we're very solvent now, the marina takes care of itself. They have to pay for, for like the attorney that they might need to, to deal with some issues as well as maintenance, but, but for the most part, that money actually takes care of the maintenance of the marina.
Thank you. Okay. Do you, do you guys wanna, okay.
Well, I've heard so many people complain about that paid parking down at the marina, the configuration, getting in and out of it is complicated. It seems like somehow we have lived at that marina for so many years, public-private partnerships, you know, we just have that thing where you go, put more stickers on what you like, what you don't like. I, I think this is another kind of like groundhog thing, you know, that this marina should have been like far different than what it really is today. And I, I don't know, I don't know how, I don't think that, I'd like to know what that parking's bringing you to the conference, because I don't think it's really that much, but it's uninvited.
Okay.
So I just first wanna encourage everyone to watch the video for the South Side Chamber of Commerce candidate tonight. Unequivocally, Councilmember Back was asked, taxes and fees was not just taxes. That being said, in regards to the marina parking, what I support, one of my platforms is to make it free for Des Moines residents. As has been mentioned, eighty percent of those who visit the marina are from outside of Des Moines. What I support is making it free for those who live in Des Moines. If you have a Des Moines address, you can get a yearly pass for free. That will mean we would retain eighty percent of the revenue we're currently, we currently have, but those who have been parking at the marina for free for decades would once again be allowed to do so, and so that's what I support.
I'll make this quick. This is the reason I'm running. So Mr. Back made a comment, they all made a comment about, oh, we would never raise taxes, I was there. And, you know, something happens where they all vote seven to zero on everything and they all say, well, you know, I didn't like that, I was really, my heart didn't want that, but they all vote seven to zero on everything, okay? And they have raised taxes and fees, they're parked at forty percent of the city's budget now, things you don't get to vote on. As far as the paid parking, it's got to go. Ninety percent of you or more do not want, you never wanted it, okay? And if you want all of the details, there are about eight reasons why I have a full policy piece on it, I have it to my left side. Chris, go.
Thank you. This gentleman over here had a question and then this lady here in the glasses, and then those are the last two and they'll all have time for closing statements.
I'm not a school teacher, but I can be.
Okay.
And I first wanna say thanks to all the candidates, actually being great for, I appreciate your time. I've got a little preamble because I think I'm asking a question that you haven't been asking yet in all of the forums, and so you need some context, and I'll try to make it quick.
Real quick.
As you know, our former sixteen-year Des Moines council member and former mayor, Dave Kaplan, took a job in the Port of Seattle, where he is now actively supporting port expansion efforts that are directly adverse to our city's state admission vision legislative agendas, aviation committee work and citizen groups that are to stop that very expansion. He did so without waiting for one full year before he went and took that job in, at the port. According to our city attorney, there was nothing the city could do, and this is because our ethics policy uses the word proceeding. You can't go work for another company if you were involved in a proceeding, like a legal proceeding. By way of contrast, city of Seattle, city of CTAC.
Okay, what are your questions, sir?
All use the word matter, so that he wouldn't have been able to do that. Here's the question, this is a huge gap in the ethics policy. What is your position on immediately revising our ethics policy to protect our citizens and close the gap and extend our policy like Seattle's and Masons for two years before our electeds go work for another company that they work with while they hope that the city will.
Okay. We really do have to stick to the one and a half minutes and I'm gonna start here with Jason.
Well, I'll go before that. Mr. Kaplan took a consulting job with the city of Des Moines basically the day after he left office and I'm still waiting for my FOIA request on how that all came about. So yeah, you know, this has been dodgy's for a long time, two years for sure. That's, I'm running on airport issues and Mr. Kaplan basically sold his act.
Okay, to tighten this up, I think the, the real question is, what kind of ethics policy do you support as a council member going forward?
Two years sounds great.
Lisa?
Well, I don't know what the ethics policy says, I'm gonna be honest, so it's something I definitely was gonna review. I know in most cases, most organizations and companies require you to have one year out before you go to a similar to becoming, it depends on what it is. I don't know, technically it was probably more than anything. So I would say at this point I would review it, but I would certainly agree that there should be a span of time. What it is, I would have to really understand exactly.
Well, the whole thing to me is a conflict of interest when the city signed him as a, you know, paid him money for being a consultant or whatever it was. And then, you know, now he's working for the Port of Seattle as the community relations director for our city, the whole thing is really not good. I'm sorry. So yes, I support whatever, that should be changed.
Okay. And Jeremy?
I, I support remand it to committee to bring to light what issues may be in the ethics policy for the city and it, it's not one that we've looked over in the six years that I've been there. So I, I think it would be great to have it brought up, looked over and, and changes made if need be.
Absolutely, I support that. And to be honest, I would support even extending that to be three or four years because I think that if the conflict of interest there is just too great, there's just too much to stake for the city, so absolutely two years, I would also be worth, I would also consider out of four years.
Good point, Steve. It's a legal thing that I didn't know about. A one address first, as far as his consulting thing, rightly, Kaplan got off the council, we did create a new transportation committee and he was the liaison with the South County Area Transportation Board and he knew the players where the new transportation committee, we weren't sure exactly how that works, so he was there to kind of mentor us, even me, on cooperation in transportation areas, but it was only for temporary, but I'll admit, I was kind of caught off guard and he takes a job with the envy, so to speak. And even more caught off guard when I had a phone conversation with him a few weeks ago, talking about a whole different issue to find out that the city's withdrawal from Star didn't mean a whole lot to him. And he basically told me that the Star, which is the airport in the CTAC run table, he just reminded me that it's simply advisory in its nature, has no power whatsoever. The, the purpose of it is for the airport to advise the cities what they're doing and for the cities to advise the airport what their concerns are. And that caught me by surprise because as we all know, CTAC Airport did not advise us with the way they're shoving this sand thing down our throat, so, but as far as the legal thing, yeah, I'd support that. And you're the lawyer, so thanks for bringing that to our attention, so yeah, I would support that.
Thank you. Okay, we have, we're gonna have one last question and then to honor everyone's time, each candidate will come up and have a three-minute closing statement. So ma'am, do you wanna, yes, you.
I'm pretty, oh, her or me? I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize, I thought you were gonna make me have questions, but.
My question is, what has happened with the parking since it was instituted as far as the crime at the marina? My understanding, we're talking to other marina residents and people who live in the condominiums, that instituting this parking fee has really reduced the amount of time that police spend at the marina solving crimes and other issues of people doing things they're not supposed to do. So I'd like to find out if that's true or not. So I'd like to find out if that's true, or please just stay aside for it.
And my, my mistake, so what was your question? Because we'll see if we can get them to wrap the two up.
Um, well, I guess along with that, I, I'd like to know other suggestions for how to come up with the money for the repairs that need to be done at the Marina, other than, I personally don't mind paying the parking fee myself, but because I'd like to see the repairs made. But my original question had to do more with the economic development. I'm very interested in economic development of the city, and I, I would like to hear from the current council members what they consider to be successes in the last few years as far as economic development. What have they been doing and what is working? And from the perspective, um, our members or candidates, what they would do differently, or what you think isn't being done.
All right. I think I can wrap that into one quick question that everyone can answer quickly so they have time for their closing statements. Um, it sounds like there's real concerns about crime in the Marina and economic development. Of course, those two go hand in hand. When you have crime, it's hard to, it's hard to have a good, strong economic development program. So with that caveat, did you want to go ahead and just speak to those two issues quickly?
That is accurate. Crime has reduced. Again, the police had a community meeting up at the activity center, it's, it's online, by the way, those, those slides, and they have had success there because they are able to respond elsewhere in a timely manner. So that absolutely has. And, and the owners around there, as well as those who rent around there are extremely pleased about that. Economic development, or development in general, we saw the development of the business park, it's complete, it's pretty much a hundred percent occupied. We've got those businesses, as we said before, downtown, we've got the theater being renovated, we've got the dive shop, we've got Origins, which is, actually is a very good place to be. And, and as far as other places down there, there is interest, there's huge interest. And so, and, and my vision would be to make sure that that Marina, which is our pride and joy, really gets highlighted. And I'll speak a little bit about that in my closing statement, but the city manager, the staff, the city council, it is about making sure that this gem and our citizens still have this place that's going to be a destination, and it is, but it'll be more so. And it all takes steps to get there. It doesn't happen overnight. I don't know what happened in two thousand and one to two thousand and nine, but I know what happened.
Thank you. We're really going to try and hold this for a minute. Do you want to go ahead?
So regarding the Marina and day parking, like I said, I think the gates have got to go. I would be in favor of keeping day parking, yeah, yeah, it sounds like amazing, but after dark, I would like to see some hard stats on how much crime it really reduces, but I have no problem with it in the evening for squid fishing like myself, but in general, it needs to, yeah, it's just ridiculous. As far as economic development, I can only repeat myself, the business sales tax is down twenty-four percent in 2019. So you can give me any kind of anecdotal data about whatever businesses have come and gone, but the revenue simply is going down.
Jeremy?
I don't have much to add, just a repeat. Origins, any kind of fitness, the Core Deck, who's celebrating their one-year anniversary on Sunday. The, the crime has gone down at the Marina. I stare at Marina residents constantly, and they say it has, even the noise from the Marina after it's closed has, has, has gone down. It's, it's working down there. Calls for service down there have gotten to almost nothing, and it allows our officers to be in other parts of town. Redondo, people have asked for paid parking on the streets and to be able to close the gates to the parking lots there because of those crime areas that we particularly are patrolling now because there is no paid parking. So all I can say is, we are bringing businesses to the voids, and we are lowering our calls for service, so thank you.
So based on police data, it does appear that crime at the Marina has dropped, at least, you know, some, some amount, and that's one of the reasons why I don't support just rebuilding the gates entirely. I do think that retaining it for visitors allows us to keep the revenue and allows us to retain that reduction in crime. I think if you made it so that just that twenty percent got in there for free, I don't think you would see a big reduction in crime, or a big, a big increase in crime, so that that's why I support that. As far as taking the gates down, I do think that that's a challenge because we spent about three-quarters of a million dollars to set it up, and so taking it down right now would, would be an issue in terms of economic development. As mentioned, I think we need to do a lot more to retain and promote our businesses. We need to have a business directory, we need to sell, consider selling vouchers as a city. We need to do more to prop up our businesses, we're spending, could increase our business taxes, which could also hopefully expand our job market.
Thank you. I apologize, Susan, we went on, I went on that board for a second. You're, you're good? Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, just one last thing on the paid parking. When, when we were first talking about that, I didn't like the idea of making people pay for something that the taxpayers already paid for until I realized how the Marina was built. No taxpayer money was ever used to build that Marina. There was an effort in nineteen sixty-four for the voters to pass a bond where the taxpayers could build a Marina. Overwhelmingly, the Des Moines voters said, no, we don't have boats, why should we build a Marina? So the City of Des Moines took on an enterprise fund, and that enterprise fund has been paid for by all the mortgages that comes in from all the voters that are there. So no taxpayer money has ever been used to pay for that Marina. So it, it's not something that the taxpayers already paid for, and now they're getting this fee put on them for parking. It's a separate fund, a separate Marina enterprise fund that has funded that thing, and all money that comes in from that parking is going back into that Marina fund, and hopefully it's going to help with our Marina redevelopment successes. How many?
Well, we, we've only got ten minutes for the three-minute wrap-ups, and it's going to take eighteen minutes, so. I have. So, um, first of all, I just want to thank you all for inviting me here. I do live in Kent, but I recollect in Des Moines on a regular basis. So, and I understand that having strong city councils throughout South King County is critical for us having a seat at the table. We're often overlooked by our friends to the north, Seattle and all of our friends to the north, so I want to applaud you all for coming out and running tonight. Um, I'm going to sit down and elevate my leg, and we're going to go this way, we're going to go Anthony, and then Susan, and JC, and then that way. I'm going to go sit down. So you come up here and use the microphone if you want.
So once again, thank you all for coming out. This final closing statement is supposed to be in regards to what our vision is for the city, and that is a really hard question to answer in three minutes, so I will once again, at the risk of sounding redundant, encourage people to go to MartinelliForCouncil.com where I have a detailed list of policies I support. That being said, my vision in the next five years regards a few key elements, and one would be public safety. Um, I believe that we need to do more to handle the issues we have regarding crimes. I need, I think, believe we need to expand our police department. I think we have a good police department and a great police chief, but I believe we need to do more, we need to increase their officers, we need to increase patrols, and I would also like to see a substation placed along Packer Highway, maybe by the two-sixteenth Safeway, in order to put a bigger focus on that area and other areas like Pacific Ridge. Um, I would also like to see us do more, as I mentioned, to enhance our business climate. I would like us to see, establish a comprehensive in-print and online business directory. I would like the city to consider selling vouchers at a discounted rate, for example, selling a fifty-dollar gift card at thirty-five dollars that can then be used exclusively for Des Moines-based businesses. And I think that we, we just need to do more overall to market our businesses and to market our city in order to bring in new businesses. I would also like to see us do more to make our city family and kid-friendly. As I mentioned, I'm raising two kids here, a four-year-old and a six-year-old, and although I love the city, there really isn't a whole lot to do. The beach park used to have a playset and a pool, for example. It has neither. I'd like to see a new playset, a modern playset placed in, maybe a, a splash pad, kind of like an angle lake. I would like to see us establish a comprehensive centralized community center with more for our youth to do, more activities, more events. Um, and so again, I encourage you all to go to my website to learn, to learn more, and thank you all again for coming out.
I think primarily we're all interested in our quality of life in Des Moines, and we live in a beautiful area. We are under threat continually with more airplane noise, and we've got to stay on top of work, we've got to work together, we've got to collectively work with South King County, with our cities together to fight this. And also, we need an independent voice on the council. Uh, I will be that voice. We also need some representation for the south half of Des Moines, which I happen to be in. And I have said this before, we're one Des Moines, but we need some representation, and I would be, appreciate your voting, remember? Thank you.
So the question being, where, you know, where do you see Des Moines in five years? And I honestly don't know. I think it could go two ways. I think on our current path, we will get overrun by the airport with eighty thousand flights more a year, many of them at night. The public has not been informed about this thing called the SAM. And on our current economic development path, which is based on house building, I see the downtown being, you know, pretty much the way it is, and at a certain point, you run out of house building, and we're in the same kind of economic problems we're in a few years ago. I see another future where we have competent expertise at the city level, and we work together with the other cities, and we do push back against the Port of Seattle in an organized way at the state level and regionally, and we do make a real difference in that regard. And I can see where we put the emphasis on our downtown and our business, which ironically is the key to keeping the family-friendly emphasis. Because the thing is, when you put more of the emphasis on business development and sales tax, then it makes it, it takes the pressure off of all of the house building and the traffic and all of the things we don't like about our neighborhoods. The key to keeping this place calmer and better for young families, it's all in developing that business district. Everything that we want, from better roads to having places to eat, to more playgrounds, all of that is keyed on developing sales tax. It's the existential challenge for us. And I'll just say one last thing, that the gravity of this city must move southward. If you look at all of the programs that have happened in this city over the decades, some very, very good, they are all focused in my neighborhood and towards the north end, okay? But half the population is in the south end, and the diversity is in the south end. So if you really want to integrate Des Moines into this singular thing where you don't feel like, oh yeah, that was the annex part, you have to move real centers south, and I mean like a community center, and perhaps police, and even perhaps some thought about City Hall itself, but you have to do it in a real way that makes people feel like, oh yeah, we really do matter to the city. Thank you.
Well, everyone said quite a bit tonight, haven't they? So, Des Moines is a very long city. It's not very wide, but it's very long. It's an extremely difficult city when you start to take a look at how to bring people together. And yeah, we have north, we have south, we have east, we have west. West is cool because it's got all the water, it's got places where you could go. There are places in Redondo, there are places in Pacific Ridge that we're making better. We just passed contracts where you're going to have new play equipment, you're going to have a new gazebo down at Redondo, you're going to eventually, of course, have a new fishing pier. You've got an awesome, not you, we have an awesome boardwalk. We want to make sure that people who come through Des Moines has an understanding of how large Des Moines is. I envision a Marina development that will really be the destination place. Now, how can we get everyone to come to a particular area? Well, you've got to have some, like stake in the ground. Our Marina and our beach park, that, that really is the key right now. Developers want to come here knowing that there's going to be people coming to this area, whether it's Redondo, whether it's Pacific Ridge, where we've really increased what's going on up at Midway Park. It's, it's certainly not the best, but we can certainly make it better. And then, of course, a community center. We absolutely agree, we have an activity center, we don't have a community center. We definitely plan on working with Highline School District to take a look at that Old Des Moines school and see if we can make that happen for us. There's nothing easy about moving the city forward to become a destination place. I just mentioned all the obstacles that we have, but those are really great challenges. I don't absolute, you know, I, I don't think that there's one answer to this, right? There's many answers to it. And I believe the city council and staff and the citizens come together to make sure that happens. So, you know, the four, the last four years have been hard, but we've worked together well as a team, and I think we can continue to move forward as a team and absolutely make some differences in this city, and we can see it happening. It's slow, but it will happen. Again, can we do more? Yes. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm not stopping. Our current city council members aren't stopping, and our staff isn't stopping. So please, vote for me and join us in working together to continue the exciting vision that we see for the city. And yeah, it might not look like this huge thing, it might look like there's some obstacles, but of course there are. It doesn't make any sense in any city. They do have obstacles, but we'll get over it.
Jeremy Nutting, the question is, what do I envision for the city in five years? So being in the construction industry, I know what it takes. I'm on a project right now, two hundred and forty units. It took three years to develop plans, specifications, and get them to a contractor for a bid. It took one year of contract negotiations. So five, four years later, we broke ground in July. It's going to take twenty-four months to build it. That being said, I'd like to see the theater finish up, plans have been approved, they're working on it. I would like to see whatever development might come forward for the Rosie's Diners, I'd like to see that break ground. It, it takes time. It's not, development's not a quick, easy thing that happens overnight. It takes time. And in the next five years, I'd love to see something going on down at the Marina. I'd like to see the fishing pier redone. It's going to take that long to apply for grants, to get what we need to do it right this time. I'd like to see a fishing Des Moines. I'm Jeremy Nutting, position number four, council. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming out. If you didn't care about this community, you wouldn't be here. And thanks to all the candidates, because it takes courage to run. Uh, this isn't easy doing this, so, um, anyway, thank you for being here. My vision, I guess, obviously protecting the quality of life, and to me, the biggest detriment to our quality of life is flying over our head, even that's how to speak. So it's going to be continued pressure against the Port of Seattle. I will use my umpire voice, and I will be heard. It will be continued pressure on the Port of Seattle on numerous fronts. I supported Karen Kaiser on Senate Bill fifty-three seventy, which got passed, and I got to go stand with the governor as he signed it, which creates a commission to finally create some people to find another location other than CTAC, because there will not be a fourth runway. runway. We've got to mitigate this thing, and it's going to be a long, and long, and long, and long fight. I really appreciate our aviation advisory committee. Steve, I think Dave was here, Sheila, I'm following your, you guys' recommendations because you've got a passion for this. I've got a bigger picture in mind, but we need you guys to stay on this team. But it's a long and ongoing fight, and I'm just glad we are not throwing millions of dollars at this thing trying to stop something, because, I mean, the airport's not going away, but we got to mitigate. So, anyway, that's one of my highest priorities. Obviously, my vision is to see continued sustainable financial status for us. We've got a double A-plus credit rating, and that came in a very short amount of time, and that was very unusual. I don't want to lose that. That gives us a lot of bargaining chips. Obviously, we've all talked about public safety. I want to give my police chief everything that he asks for. Right now, Chief Thomas says he's got everything he needs. He's got the officers he needs, but if he wants more, I'm going to do everything we can to give him more. Obviously, transportation projects, I want to see 509 finished. We just had a ribbon cutting a few weeks ago. I want to see Light Rail come through, but we'll see with this new initiative, 976. If that goes through, some things may get slowed down, but the voters get to choose on that. But another big passion, I just, I really want to see the marina get redeveloped, and I'll just give a sneak peek to something I see years down the road. I am anxious someday to see a passenger-only ferry service come to DeMoyne, Washington. Kitsef Transit offered a foot ferry to bring people from the peninsula to Coleman Dock in Seattle, and a survey was done, and 30% of those people coming to Seattle were waiting for an Uber or a taxi to bring them to CTAC Airport. So, if there's that many people on the peninsula who want to get to the airport, why not bring them to DeMoyne? Why not make this a destination for sailboat people where they can come here like Gig Harbor and eat at restaurants? And the biggest thing is just more walkability, pedestrian-friendly, especially connecting our marina with our downtown. And I'm out of time. So, thank you. My name's Rob Back, position number six. I'm willing to do this for another term, but you vote your conscience. Thanks for being here.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I appreciate your time. I'm glad to see that there are so many people down here that are concerned and want to find out about who's going to be our next representative. Please, if you haven't filled out your ballot, get it done, get it in the mail, and I think the candidates will stick around for a little bit if you want to ask some individual questions. And I really want to thank our wounded warrior here. And thank you to the Saltwater Unitary Church for letting us use this opportunity.